At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Council Bluffs Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting order. For Jean Nelson, there's a tap. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-57, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the West Pierce reconstruction project FY 15-08. This public hearing was continued from March 10th, 2014. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have there been any written protests to this matter?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter, anyone speaking against? Please approach the podium. The minutes of the meeting are recorded on tape, so it will be necessary for you to come to the podium as you have. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. The name is Sue Pridemore. I live at 101 Grace Street, which is at the corner of Grace and Pierce. My house faces Grace, and the side of the house is on Pierce. I live at probably the worst intersection I've ever seen in any community, and I've been so looking forward to the improvements that are going to be taking place in my neighborhood, on Grace Street in particular, since I lived there, but in that area. And I was concerned when I heard that you're looking at West Pierce instead of East Pierce. It seems to me like with all of the wonderful things you're going to be doing in my neighborhood, that to make sure that things line up and adjust properly on Pierce Street would be vitally important, particularly to those of us that take our life in our hands anyway just by trying to cross that intersection. So I'm just voicing my opinion. As a taxpayer, I own my house, by the way.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Rich Triptow, I'm the owner of Council Bluffs Glass. I live at 1012 Douglas in Omaha. As the owner of Omaha Glass, I just want to reiterate the closing of any street upon a business is just really detrimental to our business, our cash flow, and very difficult. I'm not going to beat it again like I did two weeks ago. I'm just going to voice my opposition to doing this at this particular time. There's some other matters that attend to this, and those things can continue to go if they move, utility lines and some of those other things without disrupting the 3,000, 4,000 vehicles that travel on that road daily. So I'm against at this particular time, and I hope that you will delay it at a more feasible time and maybe look at some other projects that are a little bit more immediate.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, the discussion I have is, again, not to beat the bush and repeat everything from two weeks ago, but just so you know, in the study session this afternoon, we talked about, you know, signage is very important so that people know that the businesses on that street are, will remain open during construction, and perhaps the city can come up with a sign that further clarifies not just open to local traffic only, but that businesses are open. So that's something that was discussed, not the business names, keep it generic enough so it could be used in other locations through the city, and I think that will help drive and direct people to the businesses that are in that area.
Any other discussion?
In looking this over, I was impressed by the public hearing that was held two weeks ago, and I continue to be concerned about the amount of disruption to the general business area, understanding that the arguments why this disruption needs to take place now as opposed to later, and I don't necessarily argue with that point. I have to look, though, to the overall disruption of the downtown area, and we're not just talking about the West Pierce project, although that's the only item of business on the agenda. In looking over the potential construction of the project on 125 West Broadway, we see the possible impacts upon parking and upon the businesses there. And then, as we also discussed at the study session, there's also a plan to redo the parking in back on Vine Street, and all this would be taking place at approximately the same time. Those businesses down there are key to the economic well-being of not only that part of town, but also to the community. They've invested a lot of their own time and sweat and tax revenue, and they agree, or they need to be protected as much as they can, as possible. I'm concerned by the fact that the businesses on West Pierce would be looking at closure for an indeterminate period, up to possibly five months. That's potentially putting some of those businesses out of business, potentially. And then when I look at some of the challenges that the businesses on Broadway would be encountering, I have to say that this is not the time to be doing all three projects at the same time, so reluctantly, I cannot support this.
Any other discussion?
I will be supporting it, and it's because of the fact that all the people that were here at the last public hearing, the people here tonight, will all be back in three years when we have to pave it, but along with you all will be the residents of 32 apartments that are going to have problems getting into their property also. This is nothing about anything to do with the building, or Broadway has to do with just being reasonable about phasing our projects to have the least impact as possible. I think we've addressed the concerns that we could, for the businesses that are actually impacted by this, to make sure that people know their businesses are open, we'll try to get this done as quick as possible, and get out as quick as we can, but to put this off is only going to make the problem phenomenally worse. Now we've got people, because, and I think somebody said it earlier, that building, I'm told, will go up regardless of whether we do the paving, so it has nothing to do with that. They can relocate their utilities without us doing this. So the bottom line is, they're planning on moving forward with this building. That means that we are going to be dealing with not just twice as many people, but, you know, four, five times more people than what we're dealing with right now to phase this for everybody to get into their properties. So, you know, as much as I understand what everybody's saying, I don't see, I see that the problem's going to get a lot worse in three years if we put it off. The problem's going to be significantly larger for everybody, and all those people that can't get to their apartments are going to be parking in the areas that we're already told we have a parking problem. So I will be voting in favor of it. It makes perfect sense to do it now before the problem's worse.
And I guess I, to piggyback on that, what was, sorry. If you could say more, Sharon, about the last time, you did some research on the last time the street was updated, so if not done, you know, today, it will be happening in the future, and the ground will break on that new housing development May 1st, around or about May 1st, so, but I don't remember the year.
Yeah, well, we had the maintenance records, and what we do know is that a lot of people said that East Pierce was worse, and there are places on East Pierce that are bad, that definitely are, but East Pierce has had a lot more attention more recently. That area's actually been milled and re- overlaid where this area has not been, and an overlay for this area is not responsible because it won't last long enough, because what's underneath it's so bad. So this has not had attention in much longer than the East Pierce area has had attention. So, you know, that was what I wanted to know, is have we done something there more recent, and we have not, so it's going to have to be done at some point.
I, this is truly an argument where both sides have a good faith argument. To me, it comes down to what we have planned in our five-year plan, and this has never been in it. I don't see it as the greatest priority or best use of tax money to accelerate the improvement of West Pierce, though I would agree, like too many of our roads, it certainly needs work and will need it in the near future. I concede that point, but just as the folks on Lincoln Avenue had to, in a programmed plan, had to have significant inconvenience and ongoing, as a matter of fact, with repair of their road, I think there's something to the process and perception that, and the considerable amount of interruption that these businesses have had when we redid the 200 and 300 blocks of West Broadway in the last couple of years, we redid the intersection of First and Pierce, and now we're going to be doing the parking lots, as my colleague, Council member Ringenberg mentioned. It's too much to ask those property owners, those small business owners there, to bear, and so reluctantly, we'll have to vote against it.
All right. With that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, resolution fails, I believe. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-70, directing the sale of 7,600,000 worth of general obligation bonds, Series 2014A. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Art Hill, 327 Golden Oaks Drive in Council Bluffs. At the study session this afternoon, Suzanne Gerlock presented what the interest rate was on these bonds, just reiterating it tonight for the people who missed the study session. In essence, we're going to be borrowing about $7.9 million and getting it for under 2% over 12 years. Great rate for the city. It continues a number of years where rates have been low, and we've taken the approach of if we can borrow it at very low interest rates, and we can build assets that match the length of what we're borrowing, we're improving the city in the long run. This gives us the opportunity to do it, and I encourage everybody to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor of? That closes the public hearing. What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution directing sale of bonds to FTN Financial Capital Markets. Dick, do I need to read the amount and the interest rate in?
That should be part of the documentation, so no, it's not listed.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to reiterate how much work that the mayor and his predecessor have done and the finance department have done. If I remember correctly, refinancing, just like you or I, would refinance the mortgage on our house when the rates are good. I think they've saved, I believe the number was over $5 million, it's been several million anyway, the last few years of taxpayers' money, and they're to be commended for continuing to do a phenomenally good job.
And I would like to add that the city has received our renewal of our rating, AA2, which is a very, very good feather in our cap, and thanks to Art and City and all of us for maintaining, you know, many cities get downgraded in their rating, and we have maintained our AA2 rating, so good for us.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-71, which is to dispose of two single-family residential lots in the 400 block of Spencer Avenue, the former Cabana Pool property. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter, anyone speaking against? Is there anybody here speaking in favor? That closes the public hearing. What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-72, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement in connection with the utility relocation by CenturyLink associated with the I-29, I-80 interstate improvements. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Are there, is there anyone here speaking in favor of? What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Oh, we have four E.
Who? Hey, I don't. Sorry. I get the early. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-73, dispose of city property described as Lot 2 in the north 5 feet of Lot 3, Block 1, Roar Park, second addition, commonly known as 1231 Crescent Drive. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who wishes to speak against? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by, or any discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 6203, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.27.020B by rezoning the property located at 321 Comanche, legally described as being Lot 1, Block B, replata blocks 27 through 31, Manawha Park Edition, from R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to C2 Commercial District as defined in Chapter 15.15, and setting a public hearing for April 7, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00 PM on April 7, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance 6206, amending Title 15 by amending Section 15.21.050, Site Development Regulations, to add additional language relative to the maximum height allowable, and setting a public hearing for April 7, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance 6204, amending the C2 Commercial District contract, rezoning approved by ordinance number 6176, on property located at 2614 Railroad Highway, legally described as Lot 16 and part of Lot 17 and 18, Glengarry Addition, lying west of Ditch, except highway right-of-way by adding commercial recreation indoor as principal use at this location, and setting a public hearing for April 7, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to concur with staff and commission's recommendation for option one, moving the resolution, setting public hearing for April 7, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance 6205, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.27.020B by rezoning part of the government Lot 4, located in Section 33-75-44, and part of government lots 1 and 2, located in Section 4-74-44, from PC Plan Commercial to I1 Light Industrial District as defined in Chapter 15.20, and setting a public hearing for April 7, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Move the ordinance, sorry. Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00 PM on April 7, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 6202, amending Chapter 1.70, Board of Library Trustees, by amending Section 1.70.040, Members, Terms of Office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion.
Recommission? The wave third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 14-74, approving the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2014 through 15, through years 2018 through 19.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry.
No problem. No, I just wanted to say that I support the outline of a capital improvement plan. Certainly can't dispute the value of the projects laid out within. However, I noted at the study session that $17 million of levy accreditation work is done with sales tax revenue. As I read the current city ordinance and the ballot initiative, sales tax revenue has to be limited to sewer and road maintenance and improvement. I'm very concerned that we are diverting $17 million in revenue that would otherwise be used for sewer maintenance and for road maintenance, and diverting it to the levy project, and then potentially asking people to pay more in sewer fees to compensate for part of that loss in revenue. Because I have difficulties with the intent of the voters as they pass that sales tax into ordinance, I just can't support this because in voting for this CIP, we are in effect saying that we endorse the use of sales tax revenue for this purpose, and given the plain reading of the ordinance, I'm just unable to do that at this point.
I'd like to say that council has addressed Mr. Ringenberg's concerns about that, and this issue has come up before, and the levy system is part of our sewer system, and we must maintain that. Council did assure Councilman Ringenberg that this was within what was voted on, and was going to follow up with some more information, but I would also say that the information that each of us were given in our SIP was that by adopting this capital improvement plan, we are not, by making that vote, we are not guaranteeing or committing the city to any of the projects that are on it. This is a long-term outline of things that need to be done. I think we all agree that the levies are going to have to be maintained and certified. The funding sources and timing on all these projects change from time to time. I mean, there are certainly projects in here that, I know we need a police station, but I can certainly tell you that the amount of money set aside for that, for building a new station or something, that when that project came before us, I would not be supporting due to the amount and the plan to build a new one, but that doesn't mean I don't support the plan as a whole. So, you know, the staff made certain to let everybody know that by voting in favor of this, it didn't say that you were voting in favor of any of the projects or the funding sources, just in concept that we have a plan that outlines some needs.
Well, ask two lawyers each for an opinion, you'll get three generally, and I've taken a look at the plain language of the ballot issue put before the voters in the late 80s, and even resort to case law in Iowa, as well as the legislative history of the whole process, which is just a lawyer way of saying that there's nothing about the way the ballot happened, or it was worded, or the process that, in my view, shows that the levies are not appropriately deemed a part of the sewer system, and therefore can be paid by the sales tax. And the other concern I have is, and I think that's a good thing, because we're the contrary to be true, I shudder to think where we come up with the money to pay for the levies so that 39 and a half thousand people continue to be above water, and I think that's absolutely critical, and as much as we, I don't think there's anyone up here, if I may say so, that's particularly happy with the level of unfunded federal mandate here, but the fact remains it is real, and I'm afraid that's, we must do what we must do.
And I would also like to remind everybody that right now, and you've read it in the newspaper, what we bring in for our sanitary sewer fees don't cover what it's costing, so I don't want you to get confused that we are doing a study for sanitary sewer fees to determine what we're going to have to do about that, so if there is a point in time where we have to raise those fees, that issue has nothing to do with this issue. I don't want any confusion about that.
All right. You will agree to disagree, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution 14-75, granting final plan for a minor subdivision creating two lots to be known as Lone Mountain Subdivision.
Motion to postpone for two weeks.
Second.
Discussion.
The reason we're postponing this is because this is an item related to, a previous item that we just set for public hearing, and so it makes sense that both of the council actions be done together on the same night following the public hearing.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 14-76, granting preliminary plan approval for a 59-lot residential subdivision to be known as Fox Run Landing Phase 3. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 14-77, amending the adopted policy and procedures for Alley Street and Right-of-Way Vacations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 14-78, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Impact 7G for consultant services for the 2013 U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfields Hazardous Substance Assessment Grant for the West Broadway Corridor area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash seven nine, authorizing the Community Development Department Director to select a consultant team to assess with the preparation of a West Broadway corridor redevelopment plan through a request for proposals process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash eighty, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Northern POCA Housing Authority and the City of Council Bluffs City Council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash eighty-one, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with C D M Smith, Inc., for professional services associated with the sanitary sewer study project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash eight-two, authorizing the mayor to execute Iowa Department of Transportation Addendum Number two thousand and twelve dash four dash one eighty-nine A to Agreement Number two thousand and twelve dash four dash one eighty-nine in connection with the I twenty-nine interstate improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution.
Slow. Anyone opposed?
Hershey's one step ahead of you.
Resolution fourteen dash eighty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute Iowa Department of Transportation Preconstruction Agreement Number two thousand and fourteen dash four dash two seventy-four in connection with I eighty interstate improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution fourteen dash eighty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute the order accepting the acknowledgement settlement agreement from Gas Mart USA Incorporated, DBA Eddie's Number thirty-four thirty-four, for violation of Iowa Code Section four five three eight point two, parent one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Resolution fourteen dash eight-five, authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgement settlement agreement from Hy-Vee, DBA Hy-Vee Food Store Number Two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Resolution fourteen dash eight-six, directing the city clerk to certify the weed assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer to be collected in the same manner as a property tax.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Resolution fourteen dash eight-seven, directing the city clerk to certify the solid waste assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer to be collected in the same manner as a property tax.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Applications for permits and cancellations eight A and B.
Motion to approve eight A and eight B.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'd like to take a moment. A few weeks ago, we were reminded how fickle life is in that a local community member, Michael Holcomb, life was taken too soon. Now, Michael was a volunteer, working extensively with the Boy Scouts, and, and due to a horrible accident, lost his life. And so, on behalf of the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, Michael Holcomb's life of volunteerism and selflessness is an example to us all. His countless hours spent with the Boy Scout activities across the area and life of giving is something that we, as citizens, seek to honor this day. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, do hereby proclaim March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, as Michael Holcomb Act of Kindness Day, where citizens are encouraged, in the spirit of the late Michael Holcomb, to perform random acts of kindness, to continue this every day going forward. It's great that the family takes tragedy and turns it to something positive. Our hearts are with you, and, and thank you, and thank him for his life. And, and with that, can I present to the family? All right. Are there any citizens tonight who would like to be heard on issues related to tonight's agenda, or on any other issues? Anyone from the council? Is there any other business that the council would entertain, or?
Well, I did want to briefly mention that I received an email today from the chamber reminding all of us that the last honor flight from our area is set to return from Washington, D.C., tomorrow night, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth. There are three flights slated to arrive at Eppley between ten P M and eleven-thirty P M for the veterans of the Korean War, who have gone to the Capitol for a day to see the memorial that's built for the sacrifice of them and those who didn't come back. And sometimes the Korean War is called the forgotten war. I can't think of anything better than for all of us to show up tomorrow night and show that it is not.
Right here. Any other discussion? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.